Good morning, everyone. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge. The United States of America, and to the Republic of Massachusetts, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That prayer today is Heavenly Father, when I'm alone, God is my comforter. When I am weak, God is my strength. When I am nothing, God is my everything. Amen.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
For item number one, on September 19th, 2025, I accepted the resignation of Glenn Vernick, Maintenance Director, Number 1901, to be effective October 31st, 2025. And that's all.
Item number two, the Commissioners request the Board to approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of July 23rd, 2025.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVorak.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Adrian Gordon with the Commissioners' Office. Today's financials include an appropriations transfer to the Prosecutor's Salary Account for reimbursement checks that were received from the USDA that were subsequently deposited into the general fund. There's also another transfer from the Commissioners' Office Operating Transfers Out Account to ADP Payroll Accounts to cover overtime pay for the staff required to cover maintenance projects. And there's a supplemental in the Building Improvements Fund 24-Hour Area Projects Account to cover the encumbrance of the Safety Center Parking Lot Project. There's a cash transfer from the Building Department Equipment Account to the ADP Computer Equipment Improvements Fund to pay for replacement computers purchased by ADP for the Building Department. Among the encumbrances is a travel encumbrance from the Juvenile Court to attend the 2025 Ohio Baylifts and Court Officers Association Fall Conference in Dublin, Ohio. And among the vouchers is $306,548.13 from the County Engineered Iraniac Paving Incorporated for Pay Request Number Two of the Butternut Road Reconstruction Project, and $133,536.20 from the Maintenance Department to North Bay Construction Incorporated for the purchase and installation of a new generator at the Annex Building.
Thank you for that change on the travel request.
Yes, your own.
So I move to approve the financials.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVorak.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Sulkowitz with the Engineers' Office. Item Agenda Number Four, the County Engineers' Office, is requesting the Board approve and execute the mortgage release for subplot Number 391 in Canyon Lakes Colony Subdivision, Phase 14C, Permanent Parcel Number Two dash 421-507 in Bainbridge Township. As the one-year maintenance period from the date of acceptance has expired and all improvements have been accepted.
I move to approve.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVorak.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Kathy Gassdettler here, VOCs and staff. I'm here today to just revise, update the Emergency Management Agency staff, the Director, Planner, Trainer, and Insulin Assistant to reflect the new name of the Emergency Management Agency from DES.
The only thing I had a question about Kathy was we have these like percentages of times for how the duties will be delegated. And I mean, depending on how they line up, it could be less than 100% or more than 100%. It seems a little strange to me. Is this consistent with how other departments handle this?
Under the hiring authority, we've always done the percentages. I think sometimes they should be close to 100, but they can overlap. So we're one is, you know, 10 to 20% some of the time. And yeah, I mean, they can overlap or be a little under.
But well, I mean, so my question is, are these ranges consistent with the other departments? Do other departments have ranges or do they have? Because I believe when we advertised for Amy's position, for example, there were just set percentages. It says 10%, 20%, you know, 80%, whatever it is, versus these have this range, which to me is just very strange. But if this is consistent with other departments.
It is.
Okay.
You generally have ranges rather than just one percentage.
I hate it, but.
We'll have to look at that.
No, it's all right. And then you got my changes for the Director. There were just a few typos. And then the only major thing I have for the Planner was it says an Associate's Degree and it's called an Associate Degree, not an Associates.
Okay. Now, we can change that.
There's a couple periods. I can hand these to you later and just minor things to change, but that's all I got.
Okay, appreciate your input.
I make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVorak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning.
Craig Swenson from the Department of Job and Family Services.
Tracy O'Sullivan, Director of Child Support under JFS.
How are you? All right. Well, we're here for Items Six and Seven. This is an annual process. I know Commissioner DeVorak and Commissioner Spitaler, you're familiar with that, but I know Commissioner Breckin, this is your first time going through this process with us. This is an annual process where we get our 4D contracts approved by, well, for the state, the Prosecutor's Office, the courts, and Job and Family Services. We are able to provide reimbursement and to pay for the child support program, not just JFS's child support, but also support staff through the Commissioner, or sorry, through the Prosecutor's Office and through the courts. And so this is the process by which we all agree and we're able to provide this federal reimbursement to pay for some of those costs. And so these contracts have been approved by the state, have been signed by all the appropriate entities, and we're now bringing them to you guys for your approval.
Okay, so look, the only question I have is about the term. It starts July 1st of this year, so tell me how that works.
Yes, ma'am. We are actually really not provided these contracts really until sometime in June, correct?
So for us to gather all the data and expense reports, to have the most accurate, to do that budget calculation that's included in those contracts, we do pull the data as of June. So that's not, that's just the staffing from all the contractors as well as the payroll data for that. That goes into the budget process. Once we have that calculation worked out, it's submitted to the Office of Child Support for a review. They're required to review them because we do receive that federal financial participation reimbursement. That review can take up to 30 days. After that is done, then we get the signatures from the contractors. Once those are returned, then we submit that action request. So there is a delay.
Okay. And this is consistent, how we do it every year?
Yes.
This is, I mean, actually can, we almost always, that's why I wanted to get it as soon as possible. As soon as we got everything, get it up there because we want it to be signed by, this year is September 30th. And just because that would have been the last Commissioner date, and what if two Commissioners get sick? We didn't want to make sure, because that allows for us to still get the federal reimbursement. If we had missed this month's date, then we wouldn't, for a whole quarter, we wouldn't have gotten that federal reimbursement.
I mean, I still don't understand, though, why the term is, starts in July and we're signing it now, and we're not like backdating. But it seems like that's just how it is. Is that kind of the answer?
Yes.
I also hate that, but.
We'll try to get those things out of your system early this morning.
I know. So I'll move to approve Items Number Six and Seven.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVorak.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Go on, Chuck.
Charles Teekatch, the Maintenance Department. I have four items on the agenda today. The first one is Number Eight. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute the construction agreement with 5K Commercial Roofing LLC for the County Maintenance Barn Roof Replacement Project in the amount of $660,000. That's $614,000 of a base bid, $21,000 of Option 1A, which is lightning protection, and a $25,000 contingency allowance for structural repairs. The bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as the performance bond for this project.
Do we have sufficient appropriations for this project?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good. This is kind of more of a Commissioner DeVorak question than a Commissioner Breckin question. But what are you, what are you going to do with the slate roof shingles when they're torn off?
They're going to be disposed of.
Okay. That's kind of sad. I think they're so pretty. I feel like someone, maybe the Department on Aging can do a craft project with them or something.
And with this project, I think 20% or so is covered with our insurance, 15 or 20%.
Yes, there was an insurance payout a few years back, and that has been received.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good. So I'll move to approve Item Number Eight.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVorak.
Yes.
Okay, the next item, actually, the next two items, nine and 10, is regarding the engineering professional services for the dog warden. We had originally estimated the engineering to be around 25 to 50K. We did select a firm from the pre-approved list that the Board approved earlier this year, engineering firm. And we named them, or had the Board name them, the most qualified firm on 529. We then entered into contract negotiations. The contract quote came back as $46,000. We sent it to the Prosecutor's Office for review and approval, and they would not sign it because it was too close to the $50,000 threshold. So they are recommending that we rescind the original motion and then send this out for public notice. So the first one is Number Nine. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board rescind the motion from May 29th, 2025. That read, acknowledge the statement of qualifications on file for professional design and contract administration, including LDA Architects Incorporated, SME, and Verdantis LLC, and Select LDA Architects Incorporated as the most qualified firm in accordance with ORC 153.69A for the kennel expansion and renovation at the Georgia County Animal Shelter Building, and further authorize the department to begin contract negotiations in accordance with ORC 153.69B.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVorak.
Yes.
And then Item Number 10 is the follow-on to that. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board grant permission to advertise for statements of interest and qualifications for professional design and contract administration services related to expansion and renovation of the county animal shelter kennels. Statement of interest and qualifications will be accepted until 4:00 PM on Thursday, October 16th, 2025. Notice of this request for statements of interest and qualifications will be advertised on September 26th, 2025, October 3rd, 2025, and on the county website.
Do you have an idea what the whole timeline is going to look like for this project? Like.
Well, just to get the engineering services on board now, we're looking at probably two months.
Yeah.
Because we have to, you know, get the bids and get them and so forth. So we're probably looking at a two, three-month delay before we start engineering.
And then, I mean, until we actually finish anything, we're probably looking at another year.
Probably next spring, yeah.
Okay. All right. I move to approve Item Number 10.
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. And then the next item we have on the agenda is Item Number 11. And this is regarding the Annex Building Roof. So we originally received this project late last year, around December 16th, in the Maintenance Department. It was originally going to be just a membrane roof replacement, which is an overlay. We were looking at very little insulation repair. There were some areas where there were leaking, so we did assume some, which is about 50 to 100K. So the overall estimate for the project was going to be around $150,000 to $250,000. We had the engineering done. We had a roof assessment done, and we found a number of issues that need to be addressed. The first one, and I have, I think, attached a roof upgrade drivers. These are the things that drove the need for further upgrades. The first one is the thickness of the insulation that's existing. It's only an inch and a half, and as of January 1st, 2017, we now require a minimum R-value of 25, which is four and a half inches. So we need to increase the amount of insulation that's there, which almost drives us towards a full tear-off. Because, you know, part of the insulation is damaged, so.
Yeah.
It's almost a full tear-off. The second item is the west side of the roof has persistent water intrusion, and it's been going on for a couple of years. The engineers have determined this is really due to ice damming. As you get to the edge, it builds up. Anyone that's been on the roof will see in the wintertime, there's very thick ice on there. And what's causing that is the roof is not well insulated. Under the roof is just a drop-down ceiling. There's no, you know, there's no insulation or anything on the inside attic. And so the area is also heated because there are sprinkler systems in there, and it has to keep the water from freezing. So because the roof stays warm and the ice on top is building up, there's always a layer that continues to build. So it's a difficult design, and we have to take some additional steps in order to solve that problem going forward. So to do that, one of the items that we want to do, in addition to the changing to R25, because you now have four and a half inches of insulation, so that's going to help, because you really want to keep the roof cool so that the snow and ice blows off and it, you know, and it doesn't build up. So you want to keep the warmth from inside from keeping the roof warm. So in essence, you want a cool roof. But anyway.
We have the opposite problem in my house. We put like the heating coils on it because we had an ice dam. So I guess there's two ways to handle that problem, huh?
Yes, yes. So one of the items that we're going to do is, or that we are proposing, is the interior plenum space, which is heated right now. We want to spray foam on the underside of the deck, insulation foam, which will keep the roof cool and keep the heat on the inside as opposed to going on the outside. So that is one of the upgrades. In addition, once we remove all of the insulation and we get down to the deck layer, we're going to install ice dam sheets as well across the roof. So that's further insulation that will keep it cool. Some other upgrade issues, the fall protection for the roof hatch and the mechanical equipment is not compliance with the Building Code. This was a code that just came out in March 1st of 2024, and it requires anything within 10 foot of the roof edge to have guardrails around it. So as we're upgrading, as soon as we touch the roof, we have to meet new code. So that's one of the items that needs to be upgraded. Also, the ladders from the high roof to the low roof are rusted, and they are not compliant with the current building code. Now, this code was actually introduced in August of 1990, and it requires walk-through handrails. There are not walk-through handrails, so when you go to step on the ladder from the upper roof, there's nothing to hold on to, so.
I actually walked on that. It was a little scary, so, yeah.
And the last item that drove the upgrades was the chimney and the parapet walls and the counterflashing are all really deteriorated. They're very old. They haven't been touched in 20, 25 years.
Yeah.
They need resealed. The coping needs to be put on. And, you know, what's happening right now is the rain's getting inside the brick and it's going underneath the roof. So that's part of the problem as well, too. So that needs to be upgraded as well, which was not considered at the time we did the original estimate. So with that, with all of those roof upgrades, and I have them outlined there on the attachment, it's going to be $700,000 and $700,800 total. And that's if we choose the EPDM membrane roof. We're also recommending that we consider going to a Key System Roof, which would be an additional $10,000. And the key benefit of the Key Roof is that it is really, works really well. It has the PVC, and it works really well in colder climates, and it also is highly reflective, so it keeps the roof membrane cool, and that will help with the ice damming, so it doesn't heat up.
So you say the Keys recommended, but actually, I mean, the engineering report recommended the other one.
They did.
But actually, I mean, I kind of came to the same conclusion, and you did, reading the report.
Right.
Which is, we're already spending $700,000. For an extra $10,000, it seems like this would be a much more robust, winter-friendly roof.
I did go back to the engineering firm, and they did say that was probably the better idea. They recommended the EPDM because they felt that that was, they were looking for the minimum that they had to do.
Yeah, because, I mean, they talked about the age of the building and condition of the building and so forth, so I wasn't sure if that's kind of why they were going in that direction. But yet, I mean, just reading like objectively the qualifications of each type of roof, I mean, my question for you was, do you really recommend this EPDM? Yeah.
That's why I pushed for the Key Roof.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that was kind of the conclusion I came to as well, as it seemed like.
Yeah, with that roof, it's, for years and years and years, it's had icicles on it.
Right.
And we're blessed that nobody got hurt. Just about every winter, we have to put out cones on the sidewalk in case the icicle does break loose. It could really clobber somebody. So thanks for all the research and details on the design.
Okay. So with that, then, Item Number 11 is the Maintenance Department is requesting the Board discuss, review, and approve the proposed concept design for upgrading the roofs on the courthouse annex buildings located at 231 Main Street and 237 Main Street, as the engineering estimate of construction cost is approximately $710,800, and that's using the Key Roof.
I move to approve.
Second.
I'm going to vote no on this, and then, you know, the reason is that, once again, I think that, you know, this goes right back to our original issue. It's nothing, you've done tremendous work and research on this, but once again, we're putting millions and millions of dollars into dilapidated buildings that should have been in the plan originally, too, when we constructed this. We should have had the whole project, so it's just, this is, I just don't feel good about this, so.
Aye.
Yes.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Nick Goris, Water Resources. Item 12 on the agenda is requesting the Board approve and authorize Commissioner Spitaler to execute the OWDA fund payment request, Number Five, for the McFarland Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project for technical services by HDR Engineering in the amount of $56,509.79. Just as a reminder, HDR is our onsite project manager on this, that's keeping track of the project for us.
And Nikki, reviewed the invoices. You believe them to be correct?
Yeah, actually, we sent them back a couple of times, back and forth, just to get some more information on them. There was a few things that were, I'm tracking pretty tight, so I wanted to make sure it was.
I appreciate that. I love that. All right.
I move to approve Item Number 12.
Second.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Commissioner DeVorak.
Yes. Thank you.
Kristi, you have 13.
The Commissioners' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the certification request to the County Auditor, request the Board of Commissioners quarterly use of County Code of Rights pursuant to ORC 301.27 for the year 2025 for the quarters. These are revised to adjusted amounts for the Department on Aging for their driving credit union visa.
I move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Spitaler.
Aye.
Commissioner Breckin.
Aye.
Yes.
And I know we're moving into executive session, but we're not anticipating having any action from executive session.
Is that correct?
Could we move, Commissioners, if you're okay with this, could we move the public comment session to now, and then we could go into executive session?
It doesn't matter to me.
Yep. So Kristi, is there anything we need to do to move the agenda around? Okay. Okay. So as you all noticed, we've made a few changes in session. We're playing with the audio, trying to get the best reception for folks at home as well. So we have a microphone in the middle here that's designed to, because some of what's happening, just to give you all a brief background, is when you ask a question in the audience, the folks at home that are watching this live cannot hear the question. They can only hear the answer that the Commissioners give. So I would be very grateful if you have a public comment, if you could approach the mic, ask your question, state your name, and then that way we can make sure that the audience at home can stay connected. So I guess with that, we can open the floor for public comment.
Yeah, we'll move to Item 17, public comment.
This is minutes, actually.
You can tap it, just make sure it's, yep, there we go.
Okay, good.
I'll turn it up a little bit.
Can I check the time, please?
Sure.
Thanks for this opportunity for the public comment. And this is actually directed more to Ms. Breckin and Mr. Flay.
Uh, and this is actually directed more to, um, Ms. Breiki and Mr. Flay's, or, uh, excuse me, Mr. DeWorack. Um, as you're aware, yesterday I filed a court action against the county commissioners for, um, failure to release public records. Um, and so my question is this, why is it that you're not wanting to comply with the law in terms of releasing the public rec, records that I requested in June, on June twentieth?
Amy, you want to talk about? Are we allowed to?
No, that's true. Maybe not.
Since there's been documents filed?
Yeah, probably should. Anyone else?
Well, me personally, I gave everything to the prosecutor and attended his office, and, and that's that. That's all I know. Anybody else, public comment?
Howard, South Russell Village. Uh, the fly-in went beautifully on Saturday, large turnout, uh, many of the youngsters probably will become pilots as a result. Uh, we have unpaid employee at South Russell Village, or not South Russell, the Georgia County Airport, and they do a wonderful job. Having lived and worked on an aircraft carrier for many years, the way they handle the aircraft would put the people in the Navy to shame. Hopefully, people realize that, and the airport will be given all the opportunity to expand itself as necessary in the years to come, and I look forward to the ribbon cutting tomorrow morning at ten o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll get back to our scheduled agenda. Item number fourteen.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for public purposes if premature disclosure of information would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to a person whose personal, private interest is adverse to the general public interest pursuant to ORC one-two-one dot two-two G two. And also item fifteen, the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into...
Amy, I think we can just do one at a time.
Okay, come back out, okay.
So I move to approve item number fourteen.
Second.
Commissioner Spitalary.
Aye.
Commissioner Breiki.
Aye.
Commissioner DeWorack.
Yeah.
No action.
No action.
Okay, item 15, the Commissioner's office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the compensation of public employees pursuant to O R C 121.22G1.
Second.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Okay.
I thought so.
Yes.
I was like, there we go. There we go.
All right. We're ready.
What time are you doing that on Thursday?
For turning at 11, single.
No action. It will be one o'clock. In there. For item 16, I don't have any items for board discussion.
Okay.
Christie, did you have anything?
I just want to add that we added an investment advisory committee meeting for next Monday at 9:00 AM. I thought it was added to the calendar, but we have to do it before we have them. So just wanted to note that I got it. And then you have the start trouble soli.
Today at 3:00.
3:00.
On the second floor. Maybe they'll show up on time now, but we pushed it back to 3:00.
All right, no, this building is here. Okay. We got everything covered, so.
This item has been notarized, so if you could sign it, carry it as fair to.
Okay.
Okay, good. I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye. And we still have some.